Welcome, I'd like to call this November 24th, 2014, council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Colossar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilbert.
Here. Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of our regular council meeting on November 10, 2014, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes. Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet again on December 9th prior to council, which should be our last meeting of this, December 8th, I'm sorry, December 8th should be our last meeting of the year. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing to report and we're still trying to coordinate our schedules with the SPCA.
Thank you, Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President, no report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President, no meeting held and none scheduled.
Treats and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President, no meeting was held and nothing scheduled at this time.
Thank you, and Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colossar?
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 14-235, fund transfer of 001 to 140 for the parking fund, 14-236, fund advance 301 to 307 for the fire pumper purchase, 14-237, budget amendments, 14-238, increased PO for the Law Department for Zastan and Rich, 14-239, payment over $25,000 to the fiber network project, 14-240, purchase of three 2015 Ford police interceptor SUVs, 14-241, repealing sections 137104 and 137105 of Part 13 of the Building Code, 14-242, renewal public defender contract, 14-243, revocable use permit for 563 Bronson Street, 14-244, donate 2,000 Pierce Fire Truck to Medina County Career Center, 14-245, MCRC 2015 part-time pay scale, 14-246, MCRC new water safety instructor aide position, and 14-247, 2015 budget and 2015 through 2019 five-year budget approval. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Brass Band of Western Reserve is going to hold another concert on December 13th, which is a Saturday at 7:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center next to our rec center. There's a charge for this band's performances of $10. Tickets are available at the Performing Arts Center or by going to the website, which The Medina Community Band, the very next day, at 2:00 in the afternoon, Sunday, December 14th, is having their annual winter holiday concert at 2:00 PM. It's a free concert, no tickets are required. It's a concert of holiday music and will last about 60 minutes. And we're just fortunate to have a band that performs through June and July on Friday nights in our community, as well as this winter concert, and then I think they also have a spring concert, very talented and no charge for those, so just like to encourage people to go. Some of the community blogs have been misstating some of the things that happened with the Candlelight Walk, such as the city paying for the fireworks and a number of the other events. So for clarification, I just wanted to lay out some of these things that the city spent monies for the downtown lighting and provided some in-kind services to have the Candlelight Walk events. Many of the other sponsors paid for or assisted with the other activities. The title sponsor was Root Candles and Brad Root Family. Silver sponsors were the City of Medina, Discount Drug Mart, the Greater Medina Chamber of Commerce, Plastapack, Armstrong Cable, and Hospice Medina County. The fireworks were sponsored by Bill Doherty Kia. The Santa and Santa House was sponsored by the Cleveland Clinic. The Holiday Parade of Lights was sponsored by the Medina County University Center and Catholic Charities of Medina. And the holiday main stage sponsor was T&amp;M Associates. And Holiday Community Circulator Bus Sponsor, the two buses that transported folks, was covered by Armstrong Hospice of Medina County Christmas Treasures Thrift Shop. So this was the 30th Annual Candlelight Walk for the city. And at the end of November, at this time, we generally give thanks for various things and we've really been blessed by the community that we have here. I'd like to thank personally the council members for your support for the downtown lighting for our events, the members of our administration, every single department had some part of carrying out the Candlelight Walk. And Main Street of Medina, we obviously could not have done it without all of their work, their members and their volunteers. And then I just wanted to share three short comments with the council and those watching the meeting tonight. Several residents and attendees shared that they came this year after hearing of the adequate restroom facilities the city had provided. They thanked us for the investment and the betterment of our community. And they also shared that in the past 30 years, they did not come to the Candlelight Walk because of not having the adequate facilities up there and we're thankful now that we did. Several other family members stopped to tell me how proud they were of the city they live in and call home. And as a result of these spectacular events, they invite friends and family members to come and see. And then thirdly, a longtime family of Medina that's grown up in town here introduced me to several of their school friends who had grown up in Medina, and this was their first time to return to see the lighting, the parade and the fireworks. And not only the family from Medina, but the friends that they invited could not express how excited and proud they were to see what Medina has become and all that we have to offer. So I think it was a job well done by all. And lastly, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. With Thanksgiving coming up, I guess we're thankful that the budget process is pretty much over. The budget and five-year plan passed the Finance Committee earlier this evening, will be on the next council agenda. And we'll wait six weeks and then start on next year's budget. So that's our process. There are a couple of things later on the agenda, advances and transfers, and then the budget amendments that initiated with finance, and I'll address those when we get there.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any report, just like to thank Jared and Miles for fixing the microphones.
Thank you. Chief Bear Duti, the police chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report today.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Ms. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of notes for council. All of you should have received in your mailbox, hot off the press, the new visitors' guide that the Economic Development Department put together in conjunction with Main Street Medina's Business Development Committee. This lists all of the shopping, dining, and the historic district, different attractions, all the places to park. We have these visitors' guides throughout the district, Engine House Museum, Castle Noel, the city's visitor's center, the county convention visitors' bureau, Cool Beans Bakery Shop, the library, and then several merchants around the district. Our plan is to update this at least once a year or maybe twice a year, depending on how things change. So if you get a chance, it's in your mailbox, take a look at that. And then the next round of ribbon cuttings is scheduled for December 12th. Some of the new businesses that have, that are coming online will be Molly's Closet, which is in addition to Miss Molly's Tea Room. So Ed Wright kind of has his little mini mall over there now. Something's popping is the new popcorn shop on the square, Alien Vacation Mini Golf, which is located at Castle Noel, and then Hoot and Harris Wine Merchants. And then there are a couple of other businesses that we're still trying to get a hold of for their ribbon cutting, so that's my report.
Thank you. Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Mandell?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Chief Bob Painter?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Recreation Center Director, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a report tonight. The Medina Rec would like to remind the community that the last day for basketball registration and skills testing makeups is Saturday, December 6th, from 9:00 AM to noon. The rec's new winter program brochure will be available online by Tuesday, December 9th, at www.madinarec.org, and will be delivered in the post newspapers on Saturday, December 13th. Lastly, our next scheduled rec advisory board meeting will be Thursday, December 18th, at the rec center at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The fall tree planting project should be complete by December 1st. Got a couple more trees to get in. The Parks Department will also begin winter tree pruning throughout the remainder of the season in Section 5, which is, it's west of Court Street and north of Liberty Street. You can refer to the City of Medina website under Parks and Forestry to see the detailed map of where we have been and where we're gonna go. And finally, the drive apron to the upper parking lot at Reagan Park will be complete and reopen next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladish. Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. November has been a very busy month for the city's building department. In the first three weeks of this month, there has been several construction projects that have come across the building counter. The estimated construction cost of these projects are $6 million. These projects consist of renovation and alterations to several existing buildings throughout the city. This benefits the community by increasing property values and by creating a safer building. This creates a safer building by requiring all new work in these older buildings to meet today's current building codes. This ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, we had a pre-construction meeting for our Wadsworth Road waterline project. This will replace about 1,000 feet of water line on Wadsworth Road. That project looks to start here, the second week in December. It should take about a month to complete, and then the restoration of the lawn and sidewalks and whatnot will be completed in the spring. We will be letting all the property owners in the area know by mail here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pecoli. Silver Strand?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've experienced some different kind of weather in the last couple of weeks. We've had snow, ice, freezing rain, more rain. As such, the leaf program was suspended for a few days with snow and ice. As I've always reported, with snow and ice on the leaf piles, it's difficult on the vacuum equipment. But with the recent warm weather, we're back out and we're in Ward 4, southwest quadrant of the city. We'll remain there until all the leaves that are out are picked up and we'll proceed to the next section, which will be the northeast, I'm sorry, northwest Ward 1. As such, tomorrow, we are receiving a demo vehicle because we have one that is down of the three, so the supervisor will be able to work out a demo to come out for the rest of the week. With that being said, we've been working some overtime as well. They anticipate to work this Saturday, and we're hopeful to get all the leaves up we can as we go forward, again, as long as the weather is conducive. The last thing I want to mention with Thanksgiving holiday, trash will be delayed. There'll be no pickup on Thursday and it'll be picked up on Friday and Saturday thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you. Merrill appointments, we have two of them. The first one is for the Planning Commission alternate, Monica Russell, for a term expiring 12/31/2015.
Move to approve the Merrill appointment.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And the next one's for the Medina City Development Corporation, the CIC, Bert Humple, for a term expiring 12/31/16.
Move to approve the Merrill CIC appointment.
Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And the next one's for the Medina City Development Corporation, the CIC, Burt Humple, for a term expiring 12/31/16.
Move to approve the Merrill CIC appointment.
Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notice of communication petitions, there's none unfinished business, there's none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 186-14, ordinance accepting the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Medina and Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for the Communication Officers and authorized the mayor to execute said agreement.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The emergency clause is requested because the time is necessary to get the back pay calculated and paid to them before the end of the year. If we pay wages in 2014 into 2015, that causes some aggravation and some complexities with the pension board. The dispatchers agreed to the same provisions as was changed in the officer's contract, with the exception of their 2% raise was back to July, and their change in health care was January because of the 60-day notice. So because of the delay in changing the health care, the 2% raise was not retroactive to January, but from July forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 186-14 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 187-14, ordinance remanding sections 3102B9, 3105, and 3107 of the salaries and benefits code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the cable TV department and accepting a revised job description of the cable TV production assistant.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a change in permitting the cable office to have multiple persons, not to exceed 29 hours, instead of just one person. They're able to use some of the high school staff that are interested in the technology and use several of them and stay within the 29 hours. And the reason for the emergency clause is we have one full-time position vacant, as well as this part-time position, and they could use the help as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 187-14 passes seven zero.
Resolution 188-14, a resolution naming the city-owned property on Public Square housing the public restroom facility, permanent parcel numbers 028-19B-2136 and 028-19B-2138, bicentennial comments.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to dedicate the area as parkland in honor of the bicentennial, with future amenities to be added, including a fountain, sitting wall, and walkway. This gives us the opportunity to use grant and/or community funding to help completion of this area.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordnance 189-14 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 190-14, ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit request for proposals, RFPs, for drug screening and associate professional services for the employees of the City of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for the emergency clause is we need to get the RFPs out into the papers and give the bidders an opportunity before the end of the year to submit their requests and have them analyzed and then awarded before December 31st. The emergency clause will permit us to do that. I apologize, this was an oversight on our office. We do this every year and just lost track of it, and that's why it's coming to you so late.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordnance 190-14 passes seven zero.
Ordnance 191-14, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a modification extension agreement with the Auditor of State, Dave Yost, and Rayan Associates, Inc., for the preparation of the annual audit for the City of Medina for the fiscal period ending December 31st, 2014.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The process for this is that the state auditor essentially chooses who will audit the city. They usually, after 10 years of being with the firm, they'll take it back in and do it themselves. They've apparently decided that there's no need to do that here. They're gonna give us, they're gonna have Rayan Associates handle our audit for another year. We expected them to take it back in this year, we think they probably will next year.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on your ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. As part of Phase 2 of our West Smith Road reconstruction, we're required to get easements from, I believe it's 14 different property owners. These three easements were part of the fairgrounds and owned by the county commissioners. They have signed and accepted the easements at no cost to the city, and they've already been recorded. We're going in after the fact here, getting council's authorization.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordnance 193-14 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 194-14, ordinance amending ordinance number 154-07, passed September 24, 2007 relative to the adoption of the Job Creation Grant Program, new guidelines, and application.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you are aware, the Economic Development Committee, they've been meeting over the past several months to discuss some changes to the Job Creation Grant Program to reflect an incentive that's based more on today's economy, as well as having an updated application that's easier for the companies to understand and complete. The most significant changes in the revised program are reflected in the number of jobs and the amount of payroll that would be created from an expansion or attraction project. I believe all of you did receive a copy of the revised program and guidelines along with the redesigned application. The Economic Development Committee basically made the recommendation, they voted 7 to 0 in favor of the application with the revisions. I know council did, at the last finance meeting, also recommend one additional change with regard to the length of the grants. So, we reduced each category by one year. So, that is in the new documents as well. A lot of feedback from companies. I feel that this will be a better fit for them and will be more in line with the state as well as other like-sized cities, and I am not asking for the emergency clause.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?[1331.99]